Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us this evening. This is a call to order for the Aspen City Council Regular Meeting, November 29, 2022. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Howenstein.
Here.
Counselor Mazero.
Present.
Counselor Richard.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here.
Let's see, this evening, we do have a scheduled public appearance and actually a proclamation as well, so I'm going to actually come out to you guys. It's a little tight back here, so.
I know, we always do this like.
This is a proclamation that's honoring Virgil Simon. Virgil's here with us today, and we appreciate his getting out in the snow to join us for this. Whereas the city of Aspen is honored by the commitment of Virgil Simon and the Aspen Choral Society to annually present Handel's Messiah for 46 years, one of the longest-running and most beloved musical holiday traditions in the valley; and whereas Virgil, a well-known sketch and watercolor artist, co-founded the choir in 1977, today represented by 80 voices, local soloists, and a professional orchestra; and whereas Virgil has lived full-time in Snowmass Village for nearly 30 years, during which he gifted the community with graphic design and visual art creation for the choir, frequent bass solos in Messiah and other compositions, prolific fundraising and generous donations, and passionate recruitment of board members, singers, donors, and advertisers; and whereas Aspen Choral Society offers quality musical training and the experience of performing choral masterworks to local singers of all ages and singing experience, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council hereby proclaim this opening night of the Messiah at the Wheeler Opera House in honor of Virgil Simon and the Aspen Choral Society, and that the city of Aspen designates this ninth day of December 2022 as Virgil Simon and the Aspen Choral Society Day.
I cannot thank you enough for honoring the Choral Society and all we do for the community. I thank you. I cannot thank you enough for bestowing this honor on this group.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you for all you've given us.
Ninety-seven and a half, and he's still kicking it.
We will start our meeting off with citizen comments and petitions. Members of the public that wish to come up and address council. Come on up, Ruth, and state your name for the record if you will, please.
Ruth Harrison. I have a few, I guess, issues, comments. Congratulations to Michael Buleoni on a come-from-behind win to bring new blood to the Sheriff's Department, and congratulations to everybody that won except for Lauren Boebert, she'll probably blow me away now. And Adam Frisch is my hero for what he has done. It's just, it's remarkable. It's very impressive. His son took the year off from school to campaign with him, and, you know, he basically lost by 250 votes because if you take the 500 and split it in half, that's all he needed. But who knows? I don't know if they're doing the final count by November 30th or not, but anyway, he's my hero for what he did. City-owned land restaurants or city-owned land and restaurants that are on them are supposed to have some affordable foods. Clark's Oyster Bar has a hamburger, as one of my friends says, that has nothing on it, $5 for lettuce and tomato, and french fries you basically can't eat. Or you can get 50 cents off of oysters. What a joke that is. That's the whole discount you get. Why isn't there a vacancy tax in Aspen? Mark Hunt, Crystal Palace, Sue Casa, Eric's Cigar Bar, Pool Hall, Bidwell Building, Boomerang, Domino's, The Entrance to Aspen, The Main Street Bakery. I have noticed that the Chase Bank got finished. I wonder if that has anything to do, I wonder if that has anything to do with money. So that's it, right there in a nutshell, and thanks for listening, and I hope something happens with those issues.
Thanks, Ruth.
Thank you, Ruth. Other members of the public that are in the audience in room this evening for public comment? I'll go ahead and look online. For those attending by Zoom, are there any members of the public that wish to make comment this evening?
The stairs outside coming from Rio Grande have not been shoveled.
I went down to the first floor, Ruth. I didn't see it down there. Which stairs are you talking about?
If you come in from the first floor, not the sidewalk, from the road to the sidewalk. There's, there's no place to walk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, a call for public comment this evening. Members that are online. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the room. Last call, yeah, come on up.
Good evening. Mike Maple, 1250 Mountain D Drive.
Hi, Mike.
Aspen. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. Is this seat okay?
Sounds good. Mike, I'm going to remind you, we try to limit comments to about three minutes, so hopefully you've got those clear and concise for us this evening.
It, I'll probably violate that because I have three or four things I'd like to talk to you about that are diverse, so you can send in the sergeant-at-arms if that's appropriate. In any event.
I don't even think that comment was appropriate, but nonetheless, go ahead and we'll see how it goes.
Good enough. Thank you. First of all, thank you for being here. I would like to state once again that I think it's a disservice to the community that the agendas are not posted in the paper or noticed in the paper. The only way to find out what's going on is to, is to take the time to access the website, and it's, you know, it's just not convenient or a good form of communication for many members of the public. I have a couple of, you know, I can see that your primary topics for tonight are the budget, so I have just a few comments on, on your budget as a, as a member of your community and, and your priorities. You know, it's, it's stunning to me that the budget is as big as it is, as always, and it's particularly stunning to see that revenues are projected to increase by some nearly $30 million or 19%. You know, that's just very troubling to me that in a community that, that aspires to limit growth, we have massive growth in the form of city revenues and city budgets. I'm a property taxpayer. I don't really like paying my property taxes very much. On the one hand, I will commend you for only increasing the property tax collections by 4%, but when I see an overall 19% increase in, in city revenue, you know, I'm, I'm pretty troubled why you need to be boosting your property tax collections when, when you clearly have some very, very significant other sources of revenue that are dramatically increasing. There are a couple of areas that I would like to see you spend some more money, however. The first one is in your, in your community development department. I am not part of the real estate or development community, other than being a residential property owner. My wife is, however, an architect, and it is extremely troubling to me how long it takes to get things done in this community. I am told by my, by my wife and friends that are in the construction business that it is not uncommon for a building permit to take six months for a simple condominium remodel and more than a year for a residential unit. You know, I used to be in the development business in a, in a big way, and, you know, one of my, one of my clear memories is to get a building permit for a 55-story building in Minneapolis took six weeks. To get a building permit for a residential unit in this, in Snowmass Village takes six weeks. How can it take six months, a year, 18 months to get a building permit in Aspen? You know, that is, that is, is very troubling and I think a disservice to the community. It is also very troubling that, once a building permit is issued, that change orders to those building permits also take a very long time to be processed. You know, the worst thing that's ever happened to this community is the several stalled projects in downtown Aspen. I don't pretend to know all the wheres and y-for's of those, but I am advised that part of the problem is processing change orders. You know, what, what, what many of us as citizens want is, if there's going to be a project, you know, I understand projects are disruptive, but let's get in and get out. You know, finish these projects. Don't, don't have a process that serves to delay the disruption of our community, not only by the physical construction, but by the, by the lack of, of businesses and restaurants that, that serve the community for years and years on end because we can't process building permits. You know, that is, you know, that is a, you know, that is a, you know, in my mind, you know, perhaps the worst thing that's happened to this community in the, in the 50 years I've, I've been here is to see projects like the, that, you know, that are, that are sitting there stalled, boarded up. The next, the next issue that I would encourage you to spend some more money on is, is on Apcha. I won't pretend to understand where the lines are drawn between the city of Aspen and Apcha, but, you know, Apcha, one way or another, is responsible for, you know, what I, what I consider to be about $3 billion worth of real estate, and the staff is about, I don't know, maybe a dozen people, and of that dozen people, you know, four or five of them are maintenance techs. Having been in the real estate business, it's unimaginable how eight or, eight or 12 people can manage $3 billion worth of real estate and, you know, some, some 3,000 units. As, as you know, in, in, in my neighborhood, I am very aware of a, of a compliance issue that has been ongoing for at least a dozen years, and, you know, this is, this is a, this is a problem, that we, we don't manage our $3 billion worth of real estate that is critical to making this community work. So I would encourage you to spend some more money on that. Lastly, the very last item on your agenda is, is a settlement of, of issues regarding the legislation that you passed last summer. As you may recall, I was very troubled by that legislation. I continue to be very troubled by that legislation. I, I congratulate, well, I, I haven't been able to read the settlement. I congratulate the, the folks on, on some sort of settlement that's, that's coming forth, but this legislation was wrong for our community. It's very damaging to, you know, those of us that own the, you know, the well over 150 to 200, I guess, I guess the number was more like 450, that people that own underdeveloped real estate where the value is in their home. You know, it is, it is, it has been a tremendous source of stress and angst for, for, you know, your, your old-time property owners, and I, I hope you will see the, the, the problems in, in the legislation that, that you passed as demonstrated by the fact that you have to enter into a settlement on the first go-around and, and, you know, set this aside. There are better ways to accomplish your goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Make one more call for citizen comment this evening? All right. Bring it back to council table then. Thank you, guys. We always invite public comment, and we welcome it, whether it's online or in room, so thank you to those that do show up, and we encourage everybody else that has things to share with council to do the same. That'll bring us to council members and mayor's comments this evening. Council members?
Go ahead, Virgil.
Just happy to see winter return. Have had a great week out on the slopes, and this is what Aspen's all about. Get out there and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to wish everyone a belated Happy Thanksgiving and looking forward to the holiday season ahead. Thank you.
Right side, nothing for you? Ward, any comments this evening?
My only comments would be that as we enter this season, to find time to spend time with friends and family, find some joy in life. Thank you.
Good words.
I changed my mind. I want a second to what he said. Yeah.
Let the record reflect that Skippy's comments are a second of Ward's comments. My comments this evening, I want to just announce and make sure that everybody is aware that tomorrow at the Wheeler Opera House, the city of Aspen will be hosting a community event, an open community gathering. The tickets are free. You do need a ticket just because of tracking attendance and getting the right amount of people in seats. Response has been amazing. Several hundred tickets have been claimed already, so do get a chance to get over. It's a collaboration with the Aspen Historical Society, the Aspen Skiing Company, and Peter McBride is going to be doing a, a showing of his, some of his new book and his new works. It's about silence and the, and the, the importance of silence in our world, but how it's harder and harder to find silence. So these are a lot of nature photographs from Pete's travels and his ability to find silence. It's going to be an amazing event. I want to thank, of course, the Wheeler Opera House, our event staff for the city of Aspen, and I also want to thank the city council because this is kind of a step one in our, our desire to see more public art and engagement and community gatherings and events, so this is step one. It's going to be a great evening tomorrow. It starts at 6:00 PM, so we hope everybody can make it over. And especially if you know anybody that's new to the community that needs to learn a little bit about what this community is about, bring them over to the Wheeler Opera House. Those are my comments this evening. I don't see any agenda amendments, or do we have one?
We do have a suggested amendment, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 136 was set as an action item. Unless you really wish Lisa to stay until the end of the meeting, we suggest that it be moved as a consent agenda item.
All right, so.
She might want to stay. I don't know.
Do we need a motion for that, Jim?
I would, in this case, I would suggest a motion to move Resolution 136.
I would make a motion to move Resolution 136, Series of 2022, replacement of theatrical rigging at the Wheeler Opera House, to the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the movement of Resolution 136 to the consent calendar?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richard.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. Thank you. City manager's comments this evening? Sarah?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And board reports, actually, unless anybody had any board meetings today, we just had them last night, so. With that, we'll move on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar this evening is Resolution 133, a 2023 asphalt overlay project. Resolution 135, MOU with Roaring Fork Wildfire Collaborative. Resolution 138, the Open Government Contract Special Events Permit Platform. 139, a change order to the Newcastle Creek Bridge Outreach Project. Resolution 144, a contract approval for Esri Small Government Enterprise Agreement, county municipal and small government local utility, AAEA Esri Enterprise Advantage Program. I'll repeat that all later if you'd like. Resolution number 150, Fiber Optics Contract with Network Infrastructure Construction Company, LLC. Resolution number 136, which is the replacement of theatrical rigging for the Wheeler Opera House and the draft minutes from October 25th. Would anybody like any items pulled for discussion this evening? I think the one that we need to pull would be the 139, Change Order to Newcastle Creek Bridge Outreach Project. In light of last night's conversation at the council table, I was wondering, should this contract be delayed at this time?
No. The council authorized $200,000 in a public meeting for continuation of this work for a total budget of $350,000 for community outreach plus an enormous amount of staff time that's put in it. This contract is not executed. We have to stop all engagement pretty quickly because we would not have the necessary support services and infrastructure necessary to complete the assignment you've given us.
Okay, so this isn't just about the potential for March vote? This is just overall project?
This is all the graphics you requested. This is the public engagement that you requested. All of the open houses is this funding support stuff.
Right, right. Okay, great. Sorry, I don't really have questions for you guys. Thanks.
That's like the best sweater I've ever seen. Things amazing.
And no other items to be pulled, so if there's a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion this evening? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. Bless you. That'll bring us to, bless you again, notice of call-ups. This is the H- This is the HPC approval for 413 East Main, Minor Development and Commercial Design Review.
Hi.
That's the second best sweater.
I think we need an election.
Special election. It's only 15 grand.
Hi, sorry for the juggling here. I'm waiting for permission.
Okay, we'll do a doodle poll instead.
Okay.
It is a good sweater.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I don't currently have permission to share my screen, so I'm just going to give you a summary. This is a notice of call up for HPC's recent minor development and commercial design review approval to add a porch over this outdoor dining area that exists at Jing. That outdoor seating area is on private property, and they've been using it for some time for tables in the summer. And they've asked to just simply put a open air roof over top of it, a flat roof. It's pictured in your packet. And one of the really nice things about this proposal was when it first came in, the covered area was to extend all the way over to the front door to give some shelter there. But it was so large that it really started to come close to the Micolah-covered dining and felt very pinched. And so staff suggested to the applicant that a reduction might be good, which they willingly did, and HPC approved a much smaller footprint. There'll just be an awning protecting the front door and a nice mix of kind of covered and uncovered area along that space that faces Main Street. It was a unanimous approval, and staff recommends that council uphold the decision.
Some things that I would like to add is that we are using.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Oh, yes, Ben Rose. I'm representing Jing. Actually, Gavin Marino was supposed to do the presentation tonight, but he is currently not being able to land from Denver. So I'm here instead. But a couple of things that I really want to point out is that we are using real natural materials on our exterior, not tent or canvas walls. We can hit all the city code insulation R-values if needed with our SIPS panels. Our walls.
Right, you're actually stepping into the, there's two agenda items for this tonight. This one is just about HPC approving the porch itself, sorry.
My mistake.
And just a little further down the agenda, you will be asked to discuss their proposal to put sides on the porch during certain times of the year. That was not reviewed by HPC, just to be clear, because it's really just your decision.
Yeah. I reviewed the packet, and I don't see any reason for call up.
Nor do I. Just a question. I couldn't, is there a roof? Is there, is there a roof?
Yeah, it's a flat-roofed porch with posts supporting the corners but otherwise open to the air. And I I apologize that I wasn't able to show you the images. They are in your packet, and when you have the temporary use discussion later, I believe you'll have a presentation then.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on that. Number one, I saw a discussion on the columns, you know, the, it just looks massive, a kind of, I think, there was some discussion about using materials that weren't, didn't make it look so so massive.
I don't think HPC had the discussion. There there were wooden, probably four by four posts, I think something fairly standard, and a flat roof. So I don't, I.
They just appear in the in the in the drawings.
I think the discussion was about more of the overall footprint, the overall coverage of the porch that was considered a bit too large in the beginning, but not the elements of the porch itself.
And that was decreased to what the staff recommendation was. And the the roof is, it's past all of the engineering requirements?
They'll have to go through a building permit and show they have a plan for how they're going to drain water coming off of the roof and collect it appropriately. And so, yes, they'll they'll need all of that confirmed.
And I'm sorry, the temporary use in this one have, a little conflicted in my mind, is the, are the planters, are those going to be drawn to the property line? I saw that they didn't feel that that was something to hold it up, but I, a question in my mind is, where did you land on the planters?
There was some back and forth about the planters. If they'd like to have them on their own property, that's perfectly fine. If they'd like to place them on the sidewalk, they'll need review by engineering to make sure we have an eight-foot wide pathway for the sidewalk.
And all of this is on the Main Street, parallel to Main Street?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I I see no reason to call it up.
Yeah.
All right. There is no call up action.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no first reading of ordinances this evening, which will bring us down to public hearings. Resolution number 124, City of Aspen and Component Units 2023 Budget.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
We used to do that together. That was our thing for a while.
You're too, you're just, you're impatient.
Yeah. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, council members?
All right.
It's been a road. This process kicked off for us internally on February of 2022. Most recently, we were with council through the entire month of October, going through six work sessions as part of our annual review process. We went through the the manager's proposal, and during that month of October, we made numerous changes that are outlined in the memo tonight to reflect council engagement in that process and to make this newly defined 2023 budget a council budget ready for your adoption through this process. The budget includes $141 million, which is slightly less than 2022's originally adopted budget, which is about 1% less. There is a high focus on council goals with childcare, housing, environmental components to that. And so with this, I would request adoption of Resolution 124.
Any questions at this time? Rachel?
It's more of a comment. But we heard during public comments some questions about the budget, in particularly just kind of coming up with a lump sum total inflationary increase. But yet, those monies are not necessarily fungible to other other causes. So that when we are successful year for sales tax and have a increase in childcare funding or other other funds, it doesn't mean we can use them for street paving or other purposes. They are by public vote, by our publics segregated to specific purposes.
That is well said, yes. We have a bit of a comparison to a year that had a bit of an impact due to COVID at the start of the year. So we have a lot of revenue growth related to the aspect of a few soft months at the beginning of 2022 versus, you know, a new 2023 year where the economy has been ticking off a lot better. And in addition, yes, there are voter-approved taxes that go to voter-specific authorized uses. So as those revenue streams grow independently, they really benefit only those programs, and it does not, it's not fungible to go to other purposes, as you said. That's well said.
Thank you.
Would you accept a motion, Mr.?
I have a couple of comments.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, Rachel, I agree with you that there are, the community, I don't think, understands the nuances between tax funds that are earmarked for specific purposes and for property taxes that are for different purposes. And so increases in property taxes, you know, the the mill levy is going to remain about the same, so the increases and those funds go to different purposes. And I will remind the public and Mr. Maple that we have budgeted more money for Apsha for additional personnel for Apsha.
Yeah. And just to tag on to that, we all know that we've had record years with Wheeler Rets, particularly for housing and for the arts, that have been far exceeding any sort of inflationary goal, but it's not something that we can anticipate going forward.
And as long as we're adding clarifications in case people are watching, the kind of underlying premise of Mr. Maple's concerns, as he gave voice to, were the management of 3,200 units, which is, of course, not the case. Half the units are for sale, so we don't manage them. And of the remaining half, the majority are not managed directly by Apsha.
Thank you.
Private sector developments like.
Yes, all kinds of other employees who work for other companies who manage Apsha units.
Thank you.
And there's another opportunity for public comment. This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Resolution number 124, the 2023 City of Aspen Budget. Members of the public that are on Zoom, we'll start with you, or if there's anybody out there that wishes to make comment at this time. And I'll look in room as well. Members of the public that are in room for comments on Resolution number 124. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to remind the public that we did have, I think, six work sessions going over the budget, line item detail throughout the whole budget. So it's, it takes us a few minutes here to make the final approval, but everybody in the in the room here has been involved, and many people that are not in the room have been involved in the the budget process since when, August or before that. So it's, it's been a long process, a lot of, a lot of hearing times, and I think, what is the budget, 300 pages?
We'll go closer to about five and a half, 550?
It's really small as a PDF, so.
You know, I'll make one comment at this time. You know, the Wheeler Opera House and the board from the Wheeler Opera House sent us some communications regarding their ideas for maintaining fund balances in a different way than we are accepting here. And I I want to let them know, I've tried to reach out to the board director, who's Chip Fuller. I tried to talk to him over the last two days. We kept macing each other, so I couldn't, I couldn't do that. But, you know, I want the Wheeler Board to know that we respect them, that we have heard their input, we appreciate it. We have gone around the wheel on this item many times for each of us, because all of us going into this have had the same concerns. But we feel confident in what we are doing with the accounting of the Wheeler Fund. There is no danger to the Wheeler building itself or the Wheeler activities, programming, et cetera. That is still and remains our priority. But we have been able to, through our our moves at this council table, allow some of this money to return back to our community and for arts and public art, and we're very excited about that. But I want the Wheeler Board to rest assured, two things. One, we heard their input, we respect their input. And number two, that we have taken that input into consideration as we agree with the the direction that we're going with this budget. We are not jeopardizing the Wheeler funds themselves. So with that said, I would take a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the 2023 Budget Resolution, number 124, which is series of 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion this evening? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution 124, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Next item, next item is Resolution number 125. This is the Apsha budget as well.
Yes, this is very similar to Resolution 124 with one exception. The city does a financial contribution to Apsha, is contributing about $600,000 as a subsidy that, which is also matched by a subsidy from the county. But really, it is the aspect that the city council appoints board members to this entity. Therefore, it is a component unit of the city, and we must recognize their budget and formally adopt it. So in the budget for 2023, the total sum of all the different funds kind of under control of Apsha is 3.3 million, and I'm requesting approval of Resolution 125.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open Resolution number 125 public comment. Are there members of the public that wish to comment on Resolution number 125 this evening? Looking online and in the room? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 125.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion this evening? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution number 125, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you. This will bring us to ordinance number 16, Updates to Title 25 Utilities.
Give you a little break from Pete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just kidding.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Tyler Kristoff, Director of Utilities. We're in front of you tonight for public hearing of ordinance number 16 of 2022. This ordinance contains our annual update to utility rates and fees captured within Title 25 of the of the municipal code. This material was reviewed with city council at the October 18th Utilities Budget Work Session and November 15th during the first reading of the ordinance. It's important to note that there are no changes to the document that have occurred since council's last review of this proposed ordinance. The overall language, rates, and fees of Title 25 support water and electric daily and ongoing utility functions in the community. Staff is here tonight seeking council support for ordinance number 16.
Right. Any questions at this time? This is a public hearing. I'll open up for public comment on ordinance number 16. I'm looking both online and in the room. Seeing no comments from the public, I'll bring it back to council table. Any follow-up questions, comments, suggestions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 16, series of 2022, changes to Title 25.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please, for ordinance number 16?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. That brings us to.
Come back to Pete.
Good relay word. Bring us to ordinance number 18. This is the City of Aspen 2022 Fall Supplemental Budget Adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're switching gears to the current fiscal year, 2022. Before you is, for second reading, is the Fall Supplemental. The Fall Supplemental includes 14 million in total. Nine million of the 14 million was previously approved or technical items, things like the ISIS Theater sale that we discussed and adopted in October of 2022. We have things that are technical in nature, like increasing the revenue expectation for the one and a half percent of the 2% lodging tax and remitting that to Accra as our business partner for tourism, promotion, and education. And things like the more opens, more ranch acquisition that happened this year as well. In addition to those technical or previously approved items that happened throughout the year, we also have 5 million in new items. The majority of this is coming from a few places, items like $3 million for Brill and Game Phase III to complete that project. $750,000 is for employee benefits, basically for claims costs in case we, we're getting tight on our appropriation. We do have significant fund balance to be able to cover that. We have $350,000 for our IT data center to be installed in this building, $300,000 for employee housing projects, and another $200,000 for outreach that you heard about for the Castle Creek Bridge project. So with those highlights, I'd like to request approval on second reading for ordinance 18.
Move we adopt ordinance 18, series 2022.
I'm going to open it to the public first, but there's no questions at this time?
No questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open it up to the public for ordinance number 18. This is the Fall Supplementals, both online and in room. Seeing none, I'll bring it back.
I will move to approve ordinance 18, 2022 Fall Supplemental.
Is it Groundhog Day?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, for ordinance number 18?
Counselor. Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes.
That'll bring us down to Ordinance Number 19. This is the City of Aspen, 2023 Fee Schedules.
And back to ping pong. We're going to go to 2023. This is the second reading for fee, fees for 2023. We really had a few targeted fee changes. The focus was really on cost recovery and simplification in a couple of places. We discussed all of these fee changes during our budget process in the month of October. The one exception to that was the charging at Level 2 chargers, and including a .25 cent per, or excuse me, 25 cent per kilowatt hour charging rate for those Level 2 chargers in the new year. With that, I would request approval of Ordinance 19.
Any questions at this time?
No questions. Thank you for your helping me through math.
This is a public hearing for Ordinance Number 19. If there's members of the public that wish to comment this evening, I'm looking in room and online. Any members of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 19. Oh, I'm sorry, Ordinance Number 19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
I'm a yes. And I think it's appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a team effort.
It is a team effort.
Oh, we got one more tonight, too.
And I, you know, we didn't, we didn't talk about this as a council, but we were going to give some awards for best budget presentation. I think what we'll do is just use this year as notice for next year, that photos matter, right?
Music intros matter.
We'll just put it out there for next year. This year, everybody's a winner.
Bar's been raised.
Two months before you have to start budget again.
That's right. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Pete.
I'm going to be back in just a second.
All righty. Yeah, we've got our, our next, we'll get set up while you're gone. That'll bring us down. We do have a public hearing on Resolution Number 145, and that's going to start off our temporary use request list here. The first one is Jing. I'm assuming we're going to take these individually. Yeah, you can come on up.
6:00 PM coffee is a bold decision. I like it.
Who says it's coffee?
Right, the red wine was a great decision. So funny.
I want to make a presentation over three different items? And then you're going to make
Sometimes it's the only decision, yes.
Ben, do you want to introduce this item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Ben Anderson, Deputy Director of Community Development. Just a little bit about our order of operations for these three separate resolutions. Kevin Reyes from Community Development is going to start off with a presentation that kind of talks about the three applications together. And then we'll give each of the applicants an opportunity to present their discussion. And then we'd ask council to sort of act on each resolution separately.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. I'm Kevin Reyes, Planner with Community Development. I'm going to be going over the three requests this evening that Ben just mentioned for temporary enclosures, three different properties. First is 413 West Main, which is where the restaurant Jing is located. The second is at 315 East Dean, which is where the Limelight is located. And the third is 219 East Durant, which is where the restaurant Almresi is located. If, I just want to point out, we had this conversation a couple of weeks ago with council on two other structures, one at the St. Regis and one at Catch Steak. Again, we're batching these in this manner this evening to ensure each applicant has an opportunity for due process, but it's also a way to help save staff time and capacity, so we're doing it in this manner. I'm going to request this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and make a presentation. And then we're going to have Jing make a presentation about their specific requests, and then the Limelight will make a presentation, and then Almresi will make a presentation. And between each of those, we ask council to, you know, review each request and render a decision between each of those presentations. So we'll, we'll work through it together here. So the first thing is, I want to get everyone on the same page about what a temporary use is. The code basically divides it into two categories. There's an insubstantial temporary use, which is less than 15 days, which is something that can be approved administratively by staff. And then a temporary use that is 15 days or more is more substantial, and that requires council review. And that's why we're here this evening, because these requests exceed that, that threshold. And when a temporary use request comes to council, there's three reviews that are involved with that. First is temporary use review, second is growth management review, and the third is commercial design review. So I'm going to be speaking to each of these and how they apply to each of the requests as we move through this. I just want to touch on the history here. I think I talked about this at the last hearing. I'll make this more brief than that, but I want to just refresh everyone's memory. Before 2020, before the onset of COVID, there were just a couple of requests per year for temporary structures. And so these are a couple that, that council has approved. The first is at the Gray Lady, 305 South Mill Street. In 2019, this structure was approved for 105 days. Council decided this was appropriate because this building was slated to be demolished at that time. The next was the St. Regis in 2017 and in 2018. There were two temporary use enclosures that were approved for those years as well. But besides those approvals before 2020, there wasn't a lot of other history. There, there were some approvals that staff undertook for temporary airlocks for restaurants that had them in place prior to a moratorium that occurred in 2015 that prohibited airlocks. But besides these examples that I'm pointing out here, there's, there's not a lot of other temporary use enclosures that exceed that 15, that 14-day threshold. There are some temporary uses that go up in town that are 14 days or less. Of course, there's the, the Aspen Music Tent, but as far as the downtown commercial core is concerned, there are not a lot of other uses there exceed 14 days. In March of 2020, everything changed with, with the onset of COVID. Pittkin County Health had orders to limit gatherings and have social distancing of six feet. And so that limited the amount of people that could gather inside of a building. So council recognized that and recognized the impacts that would have on restaurants. So Resolution 86 was passed in 2020 with the goal to proactively and swiftly work to minimize further economic disruption and actively encourage its recovery. So with that said, council basically allowed the use of temporary structures during this period. They didn't have to go through the normal reviews. They were no longer subject to commercial design review, temporary use review, and for a brief period, growth management was also waived. I want to point out, the resolution clearly mentioned that the land use code and the building codes were not amended as part of this exemption period. This was simply a one-off exception during the, the COVID period when there were concerns about social distancing. After the approval of the resolution, I'm sorry, this is, this is just the language in the reso that talks about the use of temporary uses. Following the approval of that, staff reached out to different restaurants and businesses in town and provided this handout. This is just a screenshot of the top of it, but I just want to show that this clearly states that, given the challenges associated with COVID, we would simply be reviewing permits for temporary enclosures for, for building code and making sure that they met life safety requirements, but all other requirements were waived. And this is a temporary enclosure consent to comply form. This is a form we had restaurants fill out and sign acknowledging that they were going to comply with the exemption period for temporary structures. The top acknowledges that this is simply for the winter season, and it's related to public health orders, and it's kind of a unique one-off circumstance. And all of the temporary structures were acknowledged to be removed by May 1st, 2022. So this is just a screenshot of, of one article I pulled out of many on, on the Aspen Times, talking about basically some of the success we've seen around town since COVID. Restaurants have, have done quite well. I think the temporary structures have had something to do with that. I think that is a great outcome of the program, and it's something that I think council should, should certainly be proud of. But with that in mind, the public health orders that Pittkin County had are no longer in place. The land use code is now in full force and effect, and there are no more exemptions allowed for temporary structures. We're back to where we were before the onset of COVID. So with that in mind, we have three applications this evening. Again, the first is at Jing, the second is at the Limelight, and the third is at Almresi. I'm going to jump into each of these and describe them in detail. The first one is going to be Jing. This rendering on the left shows what the existing facade looks like as viewed from Main Street. A couple of years ago, or a couple of weeks ago, rather, Jing went to the Historic Preservation Commission and received approval for outdoor patio, and I think this was a subject of the Notice of Call-Up this evening. This is a rendering of what that looked like. At that hearing, there were representations made by the applicant that this would be open and airy, as viewed from the surrounding environment. And as part of the request this evening, the applicant is interested in, in enclosing that space for 122 days during the winter season in order to augment restaurant operations. And the rendering on the left shows what that would look like. As for the Limelight, this photo here shows the Limelight main entrance. And I think most of us have been to the Limelight before, and if anyone has noticed, when, when you walk through those front doors, you walk straight into the lobby. There's no airlock or any other sort of space that's used to kind of offset any of the, of the outside weather. And so the applicant is interested in finding a solution to, to do that. And so they're requesting approval to erect a outdoor, a temporary airlock in order to block some of the wind and the snow that, that might come up during the winter months. I want to point out that the vestibule where those front entry doors are located are eight feet setback from the front facade of the building. And so the structure, the temporary airlock would basically parallel the front facade of the building. And there will be two forms of egress, where those red arrows are showing. There would be a curtain or a drapery that the applicant is requesting. And in between that, there would be a glass facade that would kind of serve as a barrier. The elevation here on the left shows what that would look like from a different perspective. Again, the outlined area in red shows the two forms of egress, and then the center there in the green is the glass facade. And the last one here is Almresi at 219 East Durant. This photo here shows what the building looks like today without any improvements in front of it. And this photo here shows, let's see, the three gondolas that were installed in this location during the COVID exemption period. Now, the applicant is interested in requesting to put these gondolas back for the winter season. The request is similar to Jing's request, which is to allow the restaurant to use these gondolas to accommodate additional guests and, and people attending the restaurant. Each gondola can hold eight people, and they can serve 24 people at any given time. So jumping into the discussion and the findings here.
Yeah.
Quick question while you're
Two questions. On the airlock, you mentioned that in 15, they were banned as part of the moratorium work, and I wonder if you could speak a little bit to the rationale for that at the time?
Yeah. You want to, you want to understand why they were banned?
Yeah. And, and like on, on what basis, you know?
Yeah, the, the challenge in, in 2015 with council was, a lot of the airlocks in town were protruding from the front facade of buildings. And the airlocks were looked, were presented as sort of plastic, you know, boxes that didn't meet some of the commercial design standards of town. Those materials they were made of were, you know, not durable. They were not materials that were necessarily what you would see in, in the climate of Aspen. And so there was a discussion about how to approach that. And council determined that airlocks are, are good, but they should be, they should be permanent. And so, you know, it's, they put the, the onus sort of on the business to find a way to, to make those permanent structures happen.
Okay. So more about the protrusion into right of way and the general look and feel, rather than some other concern environmental or something?
And I think, well, I think there, there may have been some environmental concern if, if those structures were heated.
Yeah.
I think it depended on the structure.
Okay.
I, I'm going to get into the details a little bit more of what the Limelight is proposing, but they're not actually proposing to heat their structure.
Okay.
Simply going to be a barrier from the elements of, of the outside. But some of them are heated, and that would certainly be a concern, especially with those, you know, canvas or plastic materials.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll get into the discussion, staff findings here. Again, I'm going to speak to each application separately. Feel free to, to stop me if, if there is anything that's unclear as I go through this. But the first is temporary use standards. I'm just going to highlight the few that I think are most relevant here. And it states that when considering a development application for a temporary use, council should consider the following. The first is the location, size, design, and operating characteristics and visual impacts of the proposed use. So applying this to the first application, which is Jing, I want to acknowledge first off the design and the size of this structure. I, I think staff has analyzed this and has come to the conclusion that this is certainly an improvement from what we have seen in the past for temporary structures. We usually see tent structures in front of buildings, and this is something that's much more sympathetic to the, to the surrounding area. Our concern here is with the operating characteristics, and this is consistent with our, our decisions in the, in the previous hearing as well. This is tantamount to increasing net usable space of the restaurant, and the mitigation that's associated with it, whether it's affordable housing, or parks, or transportation, is, is not commensurate with what the code requires. And that's our concern here. And so we are generally very concerned about how this structure will function during the winter and the precedent that this would set. The next is, let me see if this goes. Okay, the next is the Limelight. Again, this structure is intended to be, to function as a barrier from entrance, or a barrier from the, the elements from entering the building. It'll still provide egress for, for patrons of the lodge. And as for the, you know, the, the location and the size, we are actually not overly concerned with this structure because it is located within the vestibule of the building. It's more or less integrated with the architecture. It's not going to be protruding out onto the right of way, as shown in this, in this rendering here, or in this drawing here. With that said, the code is explicit about trying to prohibit temporary airlocks. And so what staff is proposing in, in the resolution here is to allow this structure to, to be erected during the, the winter season. This is something that is consistent with some of council's goals with regards to energy use. We would like to see it, you know, be erected during the winter season with the condition that the applicant work with staff in the coming months to find a, a permanent solution. So I can speak to that a little bit more if council's interested. And then the next is the temporary use standards for the gondolas. So staff has analyzed this, and we acknowledge So staff has analyzed this and we acknowledge the unique dining experience that these would provide and, you know, just the uniqueness of what they look like from the right-of-way. But there is concern about the size and the location of these on this property. This is the part of the chart house plan development. And there are drawings showing that open space is required on the property. And these are on that open space, but as you can see from this photo, there's not a lot of extra open space around the area. And so it provides a feeling of feeling a little over congested. The fenestration on the facade of the building is blocked. And so there's concern about that. And then, of course, the operating characteristics. These are tantamount to increasing net leasable, the same as Jing. And so this is not something that staff can support. The next is the impacts of the proposed uses on pedestrian, vehicular, traffic, and traffic patterns, municipal services, noise levels, and neighborhood character. So speaking to Jing and to Almresi, again, those two uses are intended to augment everyday restaurant operations. And so it's reasonable to conclude that there are going to be more demand for people going to those restaurants. There's going to be more traffic from customers going to those restaurants. There's going to be more traffic from people who work at those restaurants. There's also going to be increased noise levels outside of those restaurants during the winter months. And all of that is going to impact municipal services. As for the Limelight, staff is not concerned about the impacts of that structure on any of these. It's not going to increase operations of the lodge. It's simply there to help save energy use at the lodge. The next is the duration of the proposed use and whether a use has previously been approved on these properties. And this is one that I think is important to discuss because, again, Almresi and Jing both had temporary structures in place during COVID. But I want to point out that there's no precedent that was established during that time because Commercial Design Review, Growth Management Review, and the Temporary Use Review were all waived. And so none of those applied during that time. And so there's no precedent involved. So we really caution council to be sensitive about any sort of precedent that might be established this evening by allowing those structures to be built. As for the Limelight, there's also no precedent to erect a outdoor temporary airlock. With that said, the condition that we have included, we believe, is appropriate because we're trying to get the applicant to find a permanent solution. And so it's clear that this is sort of a one-off, one-year approval. And then the last one here, how the use will enhance or diminish the public health, safety, or welfare. We're not concerned about this with the Limelight, but we are concerned about this with Almresi and with Jing, specifically with regards to mitigation. And I'll speak to that right now. Under impact fees and affordable housing mitigation, when a restaurant increases capacity during the winter by enclosing outdoor space and then subsequently uses that space for a large portion of the summer, additional staff, customers, and impacts on traffic and public infrastructure should be expected year-round. Now, with this in mind, I want to point out the mitigation that is not owed when a structure is put in place to augment restaurant operations. So there's no transportation impact analysis. There's no TDM measures that are required and there's no parks fees. All of these would be required if this was net leasable space, but this is, these are temporary uses. And so these are, none of these apply. Growth management and affordable housing mitigation does apply, but it's much lower than what would normally be required. For example, erecting a 1,000-square-foot enclosure for 180 days requires just under $16,000 of mitigation per year. And erecting 1,000 square feet of net leasable space requires over $1 million of mitigation. So the differences between these two numbers is really important to kind of point out here and show exactly what we're talking about. And now I'm going to just, I'm going to jump into Commercial Design Review. I spoke to this at the last hearing. The Aspen Area Community Plan has a statement that says that we want the land use code to result in development that reflects our architectural heritage in terms of site, coverage, mass, scale, and density and diversity of heights. And this statement in 2015 was brought to the attention of council, who was of the belief that this was not being delivered on in the land use code. And so a moratorium was put into place that Councilman Mezardo brought up that basically reduced development rights in the commercial parts of town, reducing heights from 32 feet to 28 feet in the commercial core and beefing up requirements related to pedestrian and amenity space. So that's how we got to the standards we have today. So applying Commercial Design Standards for Jing, general standards talk about building materials should have these features. They should convey quality materials seen around the character area. They should provide a pedestrian scale. They should be non-reflective, shiny, or glossy materials and not appropriate, and have a proven durability in Aspen's climate. Excuse me. The, I want to point out that the materials proposed here are much higher quality than what we normally see with temporary structures. These are much more in line with what we would see in the block. There is a level of pedestrian scale associated with the structure. This is not a giant tent that's out of character with the area. And these materials are non-reflective. So this is a really thoughtful design the applicant has put forward. But what we are unclear on is the durability and weathering characteristics of these materials. There are some insulation values associated with the panels that would enclose the structure. Staff has not had a chance to actually analyze that and refer it to the building department. But I'm sure there is better durability than what is usually associated with a tent. So that's a great benefit of this enclosure. This is a similar criterion regarding materials. But as for pedestrian amenity, there's challenges. The first is, street-level pedestrian amenity areas shall be open to the sky. A street-level pedestrian amenity space may be covered, subject to HPC or P&amp;Z approval. But if the space is covered, the street-facing portion shall be entirely open. So when this was approved by HPC, there were representations made that this structure would be open and airy. It would have a roof over the top of it, but the sides of it would remain open. Now, what we have here is enclosing the sides and reducing the pedestrian amenity space for the property. As for the Limelight, general standards, the first is incorporate an internal airlock or air curtain into the first-floor commercial space. An airlock or air curtain shall be integrated into the architecture. And adding an temporary exterior airlock of any material to an existing building is not allowed. So obviously, the last point there is very clear. But we do feel that the site has unique circumstances and the architecture of the building does provide a way to integrate the airlock into the building architecture by having it be in the vestibule of the building. And so with this in mind, we do support the airlock for that period of time that I mentioned. The other thing about the airlock is the building materials. It's not proposed to be made out of a typical canvas or a plastic tent that we normally see. The applicant is proposing to create a wall of windows in front that they can speak to more, but it's going to present as more of a permanent structure. And it's not going to look as temporary in nature as we would normally see one of these structures. So there is some improvement there with regards to materials. As for Almresi, for building materials, there is challenges here, talking about the quality and range of materials found in the current block. Gondolas are certainly not something we would normally see on the street in Aspen. And the durability is certainly questionable. There would likely need to be heating inside of the structure in order to make it comfortable. The applicant can speak more to that, but in my experience, sitting in a gondola, they're usually not the warmest unless there's heating. So eating a meal, I imagine, would require something like that. And then the, as far as the being non-reflective, the applicant is open to changing the paint color and design of the gondola, so that should not be an issue for this. And then for the mountain base character area, I just want to point out, so Almresi is located in one of the character areas, which we call the mountain base. That's part of the Commercial Design Review. And this states that you should incorporate open space into building placement and site design. And I showed that limited open space in the photo a few slides back. And these gondolas inhibit and they reduce that open space that's existing. So this is a photo of that. So finally, a recommendation here. For Jing, starting, we recommend denial of the temporary use request. For the Limelight, staff recommends approval of the request with the condition that the applicant work with staff in the coming year to find a permanent solution. And then for Almresi, staff recommends denial of the request. Now, I want to point out one nuance here. Staff has responded to all the criteria, the review criteria in the packet in a manner that will help the applicants. If council decides to deny these requests this evening, the applicants can always come back and request to install these structures for 14 days or less. And so what we've done in our review of these is worded our staff findings in a way that allows the applicant to go straight to building permit in order to put these structures in place. They do not need to come back for another land use application. And so that will help expedite the process if they decide to do it for a shorter duration of time. So I want to point that out. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then, again, we'll have Jing make a presentation. And after that presentation, we ask council to deliberate and render a decision. And then after that, we'll have the Limelight make a presentation, at which point we ask council to deliberate and render a decision. After that, we'll have Almresi make a presentation and we ask the council to make a decision after that as well.
Take a sip of water.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any overall questions at this time?
Yeah, I guess on the Limelight one, I mean, just subjectively looking at it, it seems sensible to me. But the bullet you showed seems to very clearly and explicitly say in the code that they can't do this. So I'm just not clear how you guys are making sense of that. And then, like, the further on, too, the specifics around materiality, nothing shiny. I mean, glass is going to be shiny. So can you just kind of talk me through the thinking of that more?
Let's take those when they, when their-
On the Limelight?
Okay. When they're, so if there's no general questions at this time?
One other question.
Go right ahead.
On the affordable housing mitigation piece, you show the numbers of the 15,000. That's for a year period. And that obviously is and looks like a way smaller number than a million, but I think, if my math is correct, I mean, doing some quick math, if they paid that 15 grand for 65-ish years, it is about a million bucks. And my guess is that the equation we use is some kind of lifetime expectation of a building of around 65 years. So is it just paying a prorated version of that or is it actually a lower rate?
Well, it's two things. One is it's simply for a portion of the year. So if you were to take that out, 365, these are all for, you know, X number of days across the course of the year. The calculation is amortized from 30 years down to a day rate. And so we multiply that by per day. So it's the same mitigation rate as a square foot of net leasable, but it's amortized down, you know, to capture the number of days in a given year that each request is for.
Got it. That's helpful.
All right. Then we will go ahead and start with Jing.
Hold on one second. Kevin's just passing his computer to me with the presentation on it. But first off, I just want to say thank you, guys, for having Jing here today. I really appreciate the council's thoughtfulness and we all love Aspen. So thank you, guys, for all that you do to make Aspen a better place. It means a lot to me. And I tried to listen carefully to Kevin's presentation about what the city staff's concerns were. And I don't want to speak for Kevin, but from what I gathered, it sounds like, Kevin, am I correct to say that you guys, your main issue was the operational issue with it, like mitigation costs as opposed to design issues?
You made an answer.
Please.
Sure. Yeah, so our concern is related to operational. It feels as if this structure is somewhere between a permanent structure and a temporary structure, but our code does not, you know, speak to anything that's sort of in the middle. And the other thing is, we don't have clarity on the actual efficiency of the structure. If it was related to a more permanent solution with insulation that would undergo a normal building code, you know, we don't know if this is as efficient as that or if this is more or less efficient. So we don't have clarity on that.
Okay. Thank you. So looking at this from a design issue, which doesn't seem to be the main obstacle here, I really appreciated, Kevin, you saying that, pointing out how Jing is using, you know, a lot better than the standard plastics that you'll see, like in the gray lady that was approved in 2019. It's a thoughtful structure that, you know, is using good materials. They're super lightweight, so they have the appearance of, you know, something very substantial, but also they're very lightweight, very easy to move. Gavin, who's, just, his plane just landed, so hopefully he comes and could talk more about some of the design issues. I pulled up a chair for him in case he makes it. But that, let me just find the right picture. Again, I, you know, I appreciate that, that you, here we go. This is my favorite one. That you pointed out how it, you know, these are, these are good materials that are designed to match the aesthetic of the surrounding area. One thing that I want to point out is that this is on private property. So I noticed in your presentation that you mentioned that there is an issue with things that the public can view while roofs can be approved, that regarding public space areas that they remain open and airy. I do want to point out that HPC, when they approved us for the roof, was very well aware of this second application. So there was nothing, like, there was nothing in that that, you know, they certainly knew that we had a second application for this as well. Again, this is on private property, which I think is a big factor. It's not blocking any public right-of-way. It is open airy for the vast majority of the year. Given that the biggest issues were operational, I have two proposals for city council. If, Kevin, if this is okay, and if it's not okay and we have to come back for that, I understand that as well. But I was wondering if, A, we could reduce the amount of time that we submitted to, let's say, 90 days or so, so it's less, less of a, you know, essentially thought of as less than a net leasable, because that would only, that would constitute less than one-fourth of the year. And B, if we could pay increased mitigation cost. I spoke with Kate just now as you were presenting it, and she is comfortable paying increased mitigation costs if that's something you were willing to consider. Certainly, you know, that is something we'd be more than absolutely, not even willing, but, you know, enthusiastic to do in order to complete this. And lastly, I want to point out that, you know, instead of thinking of it as an increase of net leasable, especially if we reduced our footprint to 90 days a year, this is space that from, you know, let's say, May 15th to probably April 15th even to, you know, October 20th, or maybe even November 1st, that the restaurant's able to use. So for the better half of the year, the restaurant's able to use this space, able to have outdoor dining. So it's not really necessarily increasing the footprint as opposed to just providing a mechanism for, in the coldest months- a mechanism for, in the coldest months of the year, for that same existing footprint to be utilized. So I guess that's really all I have to say, and I'm happy to talk more about design issues. But with any design issues, you know, Jing would be, would work in the permitting, with the permitting process to make sure that everything is, you know, exactly where the city wants it. There's no ego here. And, you know, again, the last thing I want to say is if operational issues are the biggest concern, we'd be happy to both reduce the amount of time we're requesting to 90 days and additionally pay increased mitigation cost.
Thank you. Council members. Rachel, if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you. This is painful to be able to say no, but I'm not going to be able to support your application. And I appreciate that you've come here in good faith, but it is something that I have a variety of reasons that I'll enumerate here. First off, I'm not going to make piecemeal decisions that set precedent about temporary uses across the community. And, you know, I would have no idea what the pull from the sky is a new mitigation number for you and then apply it to other future applications, let alone just saying, well, it's less days, so the main principles don't matter, because the principles do matter. And I mentioned this at the last hearing for a different applicant, but I really think our code needs to be very seriously reviewed and changed and updated. You know, to say that HPC saw that there would be another application, but HPC doesn't get to weigh in on temporary use permits. So we don't know if they would say, hey, it's great, or hey, it's terrible, and more likely than not, it's not going to be great. But, you know, so, so I can't take that as a, HPC was tacitly approving having enclosed space when they said that you could have a roof. And pedestrian amenity is an incredibly important element in our town. And to say that you can enclose and use a pedestrian, you know, space as, as private space for commercial operations, it eliminates that entirely. It eliminates what, you know, devolved from having required open space on property to pedestrian amenity, now to becoming commercialized space. And I am not going to be part of that progression. The other things that really strike me as being of concern are where this goes from here. You know, I was one who said it, and we all said it, that it was going to be hard to dial back in the COVID protocols, but that's what we're doing. And for me, a temporary use is someone saying, we're having 30 years in business, and we'd like to have a one-week celebration out front, and we're going to put a tent on the property, and we'll give you a parking space for 10 days, or something like that. Something big, something monumental, something important to have a temporary use that exceeds your normal property boundaries and your normally mitigated and leased space. And this isn't any of those things. I can see it for an anniversary party. I can see it for a special guest showing, a special something or other. But this is really just an application to increase commercial FAR. And it doesn't go through growth management, doesn't go through anything. And that's just not how the town has operated. And I want to bring up kind of a fairness and equity question. It starts to become, what about restaurants that are below grade? Or what about restaurants that are above grade? Where do they get to put their, cover up their pedestrian amenity and make it a year-round feature, or close to year-round feature? You know, so I'm just not seeing that. There's some, a lot of issues here, and I appreciate your business. I've been in there for happy hour before. I really think you have great food. It's not any of those sort of things. But I, it's, to me, a special, you know, a temporary use permit is for unavoidable circumstances. Sorry, we weren't able to finish the roof in time, can we temporarily roof it, or something like that? Or when a facility had hoped to move, say, when Powder Pandas was in a temporary facility for a number of years before they could get their approvals to build their permanent facility, it was a reoccurring temporary use permit, and that was in the county. But I don't like that, that people want to reoccur. This would be again and again and again. And this approval would mean you would have that third criteria met to say, hey, you'd gotten approval before, why not just continue it on forever? And, you know, I just, I just can't go down that line. You know, we've had a growth management and growth control system. We have an incredible affordable housing shortage, and we have an affordable, excuse me, a labor shortage that is hurting every business in this town. And so I'd love to be able to say, yeah, we can expand everything. Every business in town can add another 700 square feet somewhere, and we'll just heat the sky, and we won't be concerned with traffic growth or those sort of issues anymore. And I can't do it. So you might be hearing comments that go across the board, but, you know, and you're the first one up, I'm sorry for that part. But no, I, I just can't, I can't go forward with this. Thank you.
If there's any questions or other comments, that's great. It is a public hearing, so I will be opening it to the public as well. John?
Yeah, I agree with what Rachel said. I see this as an unleveling of the playing field. I do appreciate the time you put into this design. It does look like a much better representation of a temporary structure, and I'm sure it could be heated better than the average temporary structure we've, we've seen around here. I said this about catch steak as well. Jing has windows on three sides, and by putting walls on this structure and enclosing it, you're basically, the views to the exterior are nonexistent nearly. And that's bothering, that's a problem for me. I think design standards are put in place so to take advantage of our views. Anyway.
And Tori, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you hadn't taken your public comment yet.
No problem. No problem. Any questions or comments at this time?
No, I want to hear from the public, but I do have comments.
Okay. With that, then, I'll go ahead and open it up. Let's open up resolution number 145. If there's members of the public that wish to comment this evening.
On any of the three applications?
Just 145, just Jing. I see none online and see none in the room. So I'll close the public comment portion of this hearing, bring it back to council tables. I'll start down at the other end.
Yep. As far as temporary use, this is the best-looking one I've seen. The design on it is, it just exceeds everything else that I've seen. One of the hard parts of being on council is, is you can't make everybody happy. And I'm basing my, my decision on a number of items. One is that there's no public health order in effect now. I honestly view this as a, not so much as a temporary use, as a permanent use for a temporary period of time, 122 days. I, like Rachel, don't want to get into a situation where we're negotiating here at the table that would set a precedent that, oh, we'll do 90 days and increase, increase mitigation. I appreciate that willingness to, to compromise, and that might be something that we could, if you go through the process in the future, that we could look at. But I think those are the types of things that had to be codified. I, I'll use a couple of, they're not meant to be argumentative, but this feels like horse trading, that, that I've seen councils in the past years ago where they'd say, we're not leaving until this is done, and start trading off on where a lot line should be. And I just don't think that this is the right place for that. And another axiom is kind of like eating an elephant, you know, where you start off with a roof, and then you come back with, with sides, and you wind up with what I feel is a increase in the net leasable space. And I also feel that it is in contradiction to our, one of our three main goals of reducing greenhouse gas and addressing climate change. So although this is a very nice-looking structure, the best I've seen for a temporary in the five-plus years I've been on council, and I think there was a temporary use for a vodka bar at the Jerome that wasn't mentioned, but...
Is that a private vodka bar?
Well, it was tucked in the cubby by the ballroom, but, and I, I never got to visit it, but there was, I think, a temporary use. But this, I agree that I think temporary uses are for special occasions and for celebrations. And so I'm reluctantly going to vote against this.
Comments at this time?
Yeah. I sort of feel like I'm disappointed in my own conclusion here. You know, I, I am someone who generally sort of bemoans the loss of messy vitality in town. And I appreciate that we're seeing business owners come forth with things that I think bring vitalization. You know, I really hoped we wouldn't get away from what we allowed during COVID, especially in the summers, but also in the winters. And, and so, you know, and yet, you know, we sit here, and I initially thought it would be, the affordable housing would be the big thing for me, but, you know, I think, actually, as we think about it, that part is actually kind of covered. And really, what it comes down to is, it is additional net leasable, it's additional serviceable space for a business. I think it looks better than it does without this thing. But we have the most severe housing crisis we've ever had. We have business after business owner coming to us telling us they can't find the people that they need. And it's easy to say for an individual restaurant, hey, it's four more tables, you know, a longtime staffer's going to pick it up. But we do have to think in the aggregate and, and think about the 20 other or 30 other businesses that would come forward. And in aggregate, it just is more employees. And even if we wanted them and wanted to house them, it just compounds the problem. The other thing I'd mention is, you know, the biggest benefit in my mind to messy vitality and additional structures is lowered cost. And if we're talking about a city street or a public right of way where frankly, we're not contributing to the problem by adding all these additional fees and the rent is lower, we might achieve that. But if we're going to add, you know, 20% seats to this, I would be shocked to find that it would come with a 20% reduction in menu cost. And that's not your job to do, but it feels as though we're not getting the conveyed benefit in exchange for the additional massing in that, so...
You're likely to see the landlord raise the rent because they have additional space.
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be. So, you know, I, I'm sorry to say, I can't support it. There's elements of this that I think are ones that we need to figure out as a community ways to enshrine, to get what we want as a community. But unfortunately, I think at this instance, at this time, it's going to compound our greatest problem. So...
Thanks, Gibby. You know, I have to echo the comments that I've heard here. I, I love this. I love the outdoor there. I thought it was done well during COVID. I wish I could sit here and just say yes to this, but the ramifications and the precedent under this are going to be far and wide. We have a lot of other restaurants that are in the same situation. I've acknowledged with staff and talked to them just briefly about it. The fact is that over just the last five years, we've seen an amazing change in the materials that are available, construction that is available, whether it's heating, lighting, and the like. We are now seeing these. We had not seen applications like this five years ago. So this is precedent-setting. I wish I could say yes to this, just like I wish I could said yes to the catch steak up top on their own, their balcony up there. But unfortunately, the mitigation does not meet the usage. And what I do agree with most of all up here is that we need to look at our code, because this is not a one-off. You know, we have, yeah, we have nine of these in front of us over just these few weeks. And again, it just harkens back to the fact that situations have changed. So I've heard it from each one up here that this is something that is maybe a sad no for me, but it is a sad no for me on this application.
Thank you guys for all of your comments, and I understand your decision. I also want to say that I appreciate both the approvals that we've had this year regarding the windows and the roof. That is not lost on us. So thank you for that. And I understand where you're coming from, Councilman Richards and Doyle and everyone else as well. The one thing that I would ask from the council with this decision, I appreciated you guys saying that you would look at the code and try to consider this, and I understood what you were saying about this not being a one-off decision. I would ask so that, you know, perhaps next year, we don't run into this issue, that, you know, if, if mitigation costs end up being the biggest issue, that a city council or staff could recommend a higher mitigation cost number, so that not only we might be able to meet approval, but other restaurants might be able to meet approval as well, especially, and I hope I didn't mischaracterize anything, Kevin, but especially if we're able to meet design standards, or at least have the appearance of they were meeting design standards with an application.
Thank you for those words. I appreciate it, Ben. And I was going to actually finish my comments with saying that, yeah, you know, you've got two approvals ahead of you, changing the, the front fenestration and those windows to doors. You've got this new porch covering, so let's get that going as this council and our staff goes to work over the next couple of months. We'll see what we can come up with for, for going forward. But you've got some work ahead of you now, and we'll see where we are, you know, mid next year.
Thank you, Mayor Tori. I appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Make one last comment?
Yep.
Just, I appreciate the invitation for us to sort of noodle on that in a way, and I guess I'd volley back, and I don't know if there's any solution that could work, but I would love to hear any thoughts from your ownership or other restaurants about how, you know, additional square footage or messy vitality, or use your word, could convey additional affordability for the community. I think that's a really big piece, too.
I agree.
Thank you. With that, you're going to want this in a motion to deny?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to deny resolution number 145.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for resolution 145 for the denial?
Deny.
145.
Yes.
Correct.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes, I vote to deny.
Counselor Mazurah?
Confusing work we do here. Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
And yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we have no can discuss.
All right. Does anybody need five minutes? You guys cool to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. All right, let's move on to resolution number 146. This is the next application of three tonight. This is the Limelight Lodge temporary use request.
Thank you so much, Kevin, for all your help on this. I am John Perko, project manager for Aspen Skiing Company. I have been doing some work at the Limelight and have put in the application for our seasonal vestibule. Kevin did a wonderful job relaying the information. I apologize if some of this is a bit repetitive, but just want to make sure you have all the information as we move forward. So looking at our current vestibule, there is just the single set of doors coming in. And I don't know if any of you have been in the lobby or the bar, very cold nights, especially when it's windy, you can definitely feel the draft come in. That is not only a discomfort as a guest and to the staff, but also it, every time that door opens and closes, cold air comes in, hot air leaves, and it puts extra strain on our heating and cooling, or our heating systems. We did recently go through an updated renovation of the space. Part of that renovation was updating our mechanical systems. So we do have much higher, we, you know, top, as Aspen Skiing Company, you know, one of our missions is to, is for sustainability, reduce carbon emissions, greenhouse gases. And so we moved towards a very efficient heating system. So that was, you know, part of the, of that renovation. We did look at installing a permanent vestibule, but because of the timing, the renovation was all... of the timing, the, the renovation was all interior work. And doing this would have been exterior work, which would have triggered the land use application. And so that was why it wasn't part of the, the, the rent, this recent renovation. So I'll get into that a little bit more. But so that's, that's kind of the, the scope of what we have currently. So our desired goals are pretty simple, to increase energy efficiency of the building and improve guests and staff comfort. Part of, I'm sorry, going back, part of the renovation also was our bell stand and reception desks moved forward closer to the entrance. That was kind of more for, is a bit, the old design is a bit of a walk as you came in. So this was to help guests as they came in. So now with the bell stand and the reception closer to the door, it just decreases the comfort when the doors open. So those are our goals. And then the solutions, the temporary would be this seasonal vestibule we're discussing. And the long term is to design, implement a permanent vestibule that would be an airlock that would be a permanent structure, not, nothing temporary. We were, in, in speaking to Kevin, I, I, we were looking at maybe doing one or two years, just looking at timing wise of getting a design implemented, funding from our ownership, and getting, going through the permitting, construction process, to get a permanent airlock in before next season will be a push. We'll do everything in our power to make that happen. But I just wanted, knowing the timing, timeframes of, of all of those pieces, it may not happen for next, next season. I just wanna be clear and upfront with that, that we will do our best to make that happen. But there is a potential that it will not. So here's the, the elevation of what the design we're proposing, kind of in the gray or the lighter frame is what would be the, the temporary installation. There is a tinted Lexan glass or Plexiglas that's this area, and that keeps a natural light coming into the space. And as I go into the materiality, you'll see that's a kind of an insulated type of Plexiglas. And then we have the drapes on the sides for coming through the entryway. And I'll go into, in the next slide, I'll kind of go into the why we've proposed drapes to start with. But that will be something we'll need to work through with the building department of what is actually to code if, if this does pass, if, if the drapes or some other option for how to have that, those entry spaces available. So looking here, this is the, the floor plan of the space. We are very close to the pedestrian right of way. This, this line right here, the stashed line represents pedestrian wide, right of way. We are one foot, one inch from that. So that is one of the, the reasons we went with drapes here. We can't have outswing doors because they would swing into the, into pedestrian right of way. So we worked with community development to find a solution where we came upon these drapes. Having inswing would also, that would preclude ADA requirement. So, so it's a bit tricky with the constraints we have with the space available on how to make this work of how to, you know, keep cold air and snow coming into the building. So this was the best that we were able to develop at the time. But it will take a little more work with building department to come up with the exact design that will work for the space. And going into our proposed material palette, so we are looking to keep this, or to make this and build this out as something that doesn't look temporary, that doesn't look like it's just thrown up as, as something that's, you know, very seasonal. It, it, in, when it's in place, we want it to seem like it feels like a permanent structure, like it's very durable. The Lexan infill glass is, as you can see, it's cellular material. So that would help a bit with insulation. The frame for the, the structure would be either powder coated or painted black aluminum. And then those drapes, we're looking at a very durable sailcloth sombrera material, which is an outdoor rated drapery material. So, you know, trying to both keep within the, the design of the Limelight itself, the, the designers of this vestibule or the designers of the Limelight, so they knew all the, the palettes they were working with for the building, and then also to maintain within the design standards of, of the city. So that is.
End with the logo.
And thank you very much. You're welcome.
Council members, any questions at this time? Yep, Rachel?
Well, more of a comment, but I wanted to thank you for talking about the renovation. That was going to be my question of why did you do all this extensive renovation in the lobby and not take care of what would known to be a cold air issue, especially how you've moved some of the desk stuff away and things that might have blocked it before. So I, I can understand that. I really don't like the idea that you're kind of asking for two to three years, as was stated on the slide. I think that a one-year approval would be the most we should consider as a board, because otherwise your management's not gonna give you the money for the next two years because you've solved the problem. And so I, I just can't see that. And, you know, next winter is pretty goodly time away. There, there should be time for you to accomplish this. And while we can't bind future councils about not extending a temporary use permit for future years, I, I think there certainly should be a footnote in the record from this discussion that we were really, or at least one council member was requesting that you finish it by next year and, and make it permanent or make a solution within, within your building, within, after those first doors. So I understand what you're doing. And now I understand why it wasn't part of the renovation originally. But I do think it saves energy and it's kind of consistent with what we're, would like to do with that. But that's, that's about the only reason. And I think that when we talk about reviewing the code on temporary permits and things like this, energy conservation purposes should be one of the potential criteria that can be considered.
Thanks, Rachel. Questions?
I have a question for staff. This is a unconventional, if not unique, design feature. I'm just like going through my head, trying to think of another hotel that has this cutout, which made me wonder, is this, was this at the time designed to respond to the code that required X amount of the building facade to be stepped back a certain amount from the, the lot line?
You know, I, I think anytime a building goes through commercial design review, this building would have been subject to previous additions of commercial design review prior to the, to the last iteration, which I'm more familiar with. But certainly in commercial design, those entry features are a really focal point of the review, are now and have been for a long time. So I would imagine that sort of, you know, I think in architectural terms, that's called a loggia, you know, is a, is a kind of an entry feature that would have been supported by commercial design review. You know, probably in retrospect, wasn't the best to keep weather out the way that it was configured. But, you know, I, I do think it's a fairly common kind of facade entry feature for, you know, a lot of different commercial buildings.
I mean, my question is more, was the, was the code at that time as such that if it didn't have this piece, it would not have met code, or it would have had to have that inset at some other part of the facade?
I, I was on council when the Limelight was approved, and I don't recall that as being any driver.
Okay.
Was that a P D?
I believe it was a P U D back in the day.
Could I maybe give one comment to that? Oops, sorry.
Yeah, please.
I think one reason why is if, if you were to bring, if, at the time of design, if the entrance were all the way up to the front here, for egress, for commercial, it needs to be outswing. So if there's a fire or something, and then the doors would swing out into the public right of way. So I think that's why it was stepped back.
I guess my second question is just, I mean, look, on its face, this seems like a perfectly fine proposal. I just, looking at the code requirements, and it seems diametrically opposed to what's written. And it's just hard for me to square that. And I'm wondering if we can do a code amendment in a reasonable amount of time to respond.
I will say that a code amendment in a reasonable amount of time to accommodate their needs is, is not practical. I will say for council's information broadly on a whole number of topics that have been brought up this evening, comdev leadership have had some initial conversations with Sarah, kind of broadly around commercial vitality, you know, whether it's the restaurant spaces, whether it's this type of, of, of application, whether it's outdoor heating, you know, councils had several conversations that have, I think, illuminated issues where we've got some problems in the land use code, being consistent with, I think, community conversations about a lot of different things. Sandwich boards, for example. And so I think the, the intention is to come to council sometime in 2023, hopefully earlier in 2023, to have a conversation on a whole variety of topics around the potential code changes on, that, that intersect with a lot of these things. But I will say that, you know, I do think that Kevin and the applicant have made some representations that I do think that, you know, there's, there's a, there's a material quality difference in what's being proposed. This is in canvas and, and some plastic shading. And I, I do think that there's that in combination with the kind of temporary nature of this and, and giving this a runway to a more permanent solution with their, with their entry configuration. I think comdev staff is comfortable with that.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this. If there's members of the public that wish to comment this evening on Resolution Number 146, the Limelight temporary And seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Comments? Go ahead, John.
I fully support this. I agree with Rachel. I, I'm only comfortable doing a temporary request for a year. But this does not increase net leasable space. And it's designed to save energy, and they're not proposing to heat this space. So I, I think it's a good idea, actually, for them to do this, and I support it.
Thanks, John. Ward?
Yeah, I think the resolution's for 125 days. And I would support that. It is a one-year, if you wanna come back next year. But I agree with Rachel, if we can make this permanent, I think if we can work it into the codes, I think it's going in the right direction. And I think there are some other buildings downtown in the core that do have setback entries that would, could learn from this and that I'm, I approve of, I, I totally disapprove of wide open doors in the winter and fully approve of this to try to make some kind of impact on greenhouse gas and climate. And I think it's a better design than the temporary doors at the sun deck that are there in the winter. So, yeah, I, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Can I make a comment first?
Yep, Skippy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm not gonna support this. I actually think it's an improvement as well. I just, I came in seeing two parts of the code that I thought didn't comport. And I think I've been substantially convinced on the materiality piece and the redeflectivity piece. I think you've given that a lot of thought. We have a code for a reason, and I really dislike when I have to say it. I think this is a good project, and I don't think that the code allows it, something I used to have to do a lot more on P and C. I haven't had to do it much here, which has been nice. This is one where it just seems really clear to me. But I would like to see some amendments because I think this is a positive. So even though I'm voting no, I'm kind of happy to see it going forward because I think we can learn from it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 146.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution Number 146, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Affirmative.
Counselor Mazero?
No.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. And I was just going over the, I was going over the resolution to make sure that it was written with one year. But I don't think it's delineated as one year as much as it just outlines the 125 days valid through the 2023 date that's in here. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. Yeah, it was intended to just be for this, for this winter season.
Okay.
Great. Thank you all very much. Thank you for what you do for the community. And Kevin, thank you so much for all your time on this.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
You, too.
Have a great evening. That'll bring us down to Resolution Number 147. This is Almresi temporary use request.
You guys don't have a presentation, is there, right?
Yeah.
You're just gonna speak, right?
I'm speaking.
Okay, I'm not gonna share my screen anymore.
Okay. Good evening together. Thank you that we can be here. My name is Franz Thomas, and this is my daughter, Alisa. Please excuse my poor English. I'm not so good. That's why Alisa is with me. Maybe she has to help me a little bit. I just wanna start with why we are here, why we came. We came six years ago. We came to Welle. It was, we have restaurants in Germany. I was not old enough, even I look old today, to give my restaurants to my daughter. And so we said, come on, we go to the States and we try something. Alisa worked at the Sonnenalp in, in Welle, and we opened there an Almresi. And after three months, Teddy Farrell from The Dancing Bear came and said, hey, we'd like to have something in Aspen, the same. And we said, no, we are just here three months. Please let us work. But we still have been in talks. And then 2019, we came. It took a while until we got our permit. We had a learning curve. We are in mountain time, and everything takes a little bit longer. And, yeah, then we opened at the end, 2019, and we had to close like everyone else when COVID hit us. For us, it's, we are a little bit different because we have to bring our European stuff to us. We have at least 15, 18 people from Europe which are working for us. And we need a German chef or an Austrian chef to bring over schnitzel. And this all is what you, maybe you have been in our restaurant. So we closed actually for two years because we couldn't bring our employees in. And I have an investor visa. But just to explain you how it was, my wife couldn't come in for seven months. So I had to stay here. If I would have left, I couldn't come in. Even I spent here 1.5 million in, in Welle, we spent also. So then after this, we said, hey, how can we do something, you know, to do a special or do something different? And in Europe, everyone is selling or is giving something in the gondolas. And we said, hey, our logo is the Arts Meteorocles. Let's try with the gondolas. And I understand what Rachel said before. And I know that is denied anyway. But I would just wanna explain why, why we are here, what we wanna do, and why we did it. And Kevin, I learned, I have to say that you did a good job, I heard before. He told me right away, it will be very difficult. But why we are asking for this winter is because since two and a half years, we're trying to get our patio. And every time someone tells me, no, this is not working, this is not working, that's the reason, or whatever. And so it is for us today, a learning curve, what we can do and how we can do that maybe next year or the following year, we can have a patio. Because we came to stay and not to leave again. And it was very expensive for us over this two years to, to pay the lease and, and everything. And what we did last year, we bought the space. And The Dancing Bear was forcing us a little bit. He said, hey, we have other ones. And then we, we, we did a deal with each other, which was very nice from The Dancing Bear. And so we could buy it. And so now we need the development. We have inside, we have 78 seats. And we see the outside seating or this, this gondola experience just that it is something unique, which fit in to an, to a city like Aspen. It should be there. But I heard you before, and I said to my daughter, maybe we leave right away. But no, I just like to introduce us. And we understand that this is the, the code, which is here. And, yeah, that is what we want.
And I think for us, we understand that there are things that, based on the code, we would be more than happy to change, like the outside, the shininess, the glossiness. We understand that part. Also with like the heating require, or like the electricity part, where we said, okay, the heating part in the middle, or like the cooking stove in the middle would be already generating heat. And so we just necessarily don't need actual, additional heat. And so we just necessarily don't need actual he- additional heat. We have heating pads that we, um, don't need electricity for. So they're just like for the time when the guests are sitting in there, that it generates heat and with the body heat in all these little parts. And so also our gondolas necessarily just add six to 12 seats. And we don't necessarily need one more employee for that. So we only have a handful of people, three servers, um, one person who is in charge, and then one bartender. And it wouldn't be an increase. We're only open for two, uh, for five days a week. So, um, we are at the Berlin game, uh, have housing for the winter season. So, and all we are requesting would be really from December, um, all the way through April. And it would be just more or less, um, yeah, a solution for not getting our, our, or not having our patio at the moment and finding a halfway solution. Um, when you saw the picture earlier, what you showed, um, with the gondolas really close being to the, to the wall of, um, of Almresi. I under- also when you mentioned that there should be open space, I think that actually it doesn't look honestly good. If I could even put it a little further, but it is on our private property. So I was, I believe that it doesn't necessarily block the, the space, uh, the, yeah, the sky. It necessarily blocks more the view to the building. And so.
We have five of them in, in Welle, at the Alpenrose. And we have, uh, a lot of customer, which are very, very happy. And we had customer from Aspen, which came over actually last year and, uh, had it in, in Welle because they liked it. It's just something different. I don't know, maybe someone was in there. It's just something different. And that's why we think it would be something which was fitting in here. I totally understand the code. I have also to say sorry to other people when they, uh, went something for me. But we just wanna explain what we're up to, why we like to do it. And, uh, yeah, and, um, that's it, in a way. What we're up to.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kevin, really.
Yeah.
Council members, any questions at this time? This is a public hearing, so I will open a pu- public hearing in a second. Any questions at this time?
No questions.
Uh, this is a public hearing for resolution number 147. This is the Almresi Temporary Use Request. If there's members of the public that wish to comment this evening. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Council members? Comments on Almresi? I'll start at this end. Ward?
Well, this almost makes me want to do a road trip to Welle to check out the ones there. They're, um, I'm looking at your menu, and I'm, I'm salivating for a schnitzel and apple strudel. But I think in, considering the location, that you should consider having mud pie on the dessert menu. My kids, um, uh, grew up on mud pie at the Chart House. I, I, I can't support this for a variety of reasons. I, I, I think it's, uh, an interesting concept, but I just, it's just in violation of all of the, all of the issues that I mentioned on the, uh, the Jing application. I, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to going and having a schnitzel, though.
Thank you for your comments, Ward. I, I, I wanna, I'm gonna go ahead and say just a couple of words because I want council members to be aware of where I, where I stand on this. Uh, I'm open to it. I wanna let you know, I, I agree that, um, this is against code. I find that times are changing. I think that, you know, uh, this is a beautification. I think it's interest. I think it's interesting. I think it's, uh, a little different from the other applications we've had. So I, I, I'm open to this. I want council members to know that. Rachel.
Yeah, well, and thank you for that, Torrey. And I, I can understand why. And as, as Ward is saying, it's pretty interesting. And I really appreciate you taking the time to, to come in and introduce yourselves and understand that it is a difficult position to be in. You know, and I, I actually have history. I was, I was on the council when we approved that Chart House building quite a while ago. And so I remember the battles over the density that was on that site already. And that was, um, pulled back to become a wedding cake building that had tiered so that it didn't appear as massive from the front. And even further, there was a, a slice off of some of the back to make an angle so there'd be better visibility. There was a lot of care that went into what that building would look like. And I would be the first to say, I think they really need some more landscaping in front of the building. It's kinda like they finally got it built and they walked away. And so your, your gondolas have made it more attractive as a building, but, uh, I don't think it, it qualifies as landscaping. And it should have been landscaped, and they still should landscape it. And I'm delighted to see a, a European true restaurant back in town since we lost the Wienerstube. And, uh, you know, those sort of things are very, uh, very traditional to have in Aspen. And so I appreciate you, you're making a go of it here and everything. I, I simply just can't support that, knowing the, the care that went into the design of that building and the, 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 the issues regarding masks. And it, it's like everybody gets their approval. And again, not you guys, but others. And then they come in and say, but I want a little more. I, I, I know we said this is all we really needed when we built the building, but now we need more. And I, I think it does set a precedent for every other building in our town to, to want just a little more somehow. And, um, so I, I, again, I apologize to have to say no, but that's my job.
Thanks, Rachel. John?
I also get no joy from saying no. And my other comment is I had a fantastic meal at Almresi pre-COVID, and I look forward to dining in your establishment again. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. If I can just say something, uh, you know, we, uh, we like to do more. And that's why I heard something when something is temporary, because I'm missing a Chris Kindle market. So we are talking with few people, like with Henning Van from, from the, which is now a friend of mine and who is now at Little Nell. We said, hey, why is there not a Chris Kindle market? And, you know, and we, we like to be a part of the community. And we totally, that's why I said to Alisa, come on, we, we go. But, uh, we like just to introduce us. We totally understand. If you say yes to us, please. You know, we know the French, uh, crabery. I think he did a great job there. And I, I didn't, I don't see him on the line. Maybe he's coming, but, you know, you know, you can't say yes to someone and to no to other ones. I, I, we totally understand.
It's very challenging. And as, as I kinda said earlier, I, I see temporary use permits for things like having, uh, a three-week Christmas mart over the holidays. I mean, that would be wonderful and allow that sort of thing. But that's different as an event and as a special thing than saying, I just want to expand my commercial space. And, and that's what other things, yours is much better packaged, but it's, it's still the same.
It's still the same, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Skippy?
Yeah, I just, I'd say I, I like seeing them out there. I mean, I think even if they're not used selfishly, they'd be better as just art, you know, to, to nothing. So it's, it's not about that. I hope that, for all the reasons you guys have indicated, you'd take them to Welle or wherever else and make money off of them. But, um, yeah, I mean, for, for all the same reasons, I'd come to the same conclusion. Although, um, to, to your point, the resolutions were written in such a way that for a shorter period, this could still happen. So that's available.
You can apply to use them for two weeks.
Yeah.
In the course of the winter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We call them, uh, a reason why we call them the Golden Gondolas from Aspen, just to, to have something special so that the people say, hey, have you been in the Golden Gondolas? And, uh, it does a big difference between Welle. We really like Welle, but we love Aspen. So that's why it is unbelievable for us when we came now in with my wife. She's waiting outside, and we said, hey, look, they don't groom the, is the right word? groom the, the snow, you know? And nothing is, uh, it's just back to normal. And this is what, what we want, and this is how we do business in Germany, always with the, the Alp style, always rustic and, you know, and how we are doing something. And, uh, we hope that we have a lot of years before to come and, yeah.
I might get some critique for this decision because Almresi is my mom's favorite restaurant.
You're gonna hear about it.
So hopefully she's not watching.
I don't know if you've had a chance yet to, um, in your spare time, get involved with our Sister City program because there hasn't been a real advocate for the Germany exchanges since Claus Kreis closed down the Golden Horn. And so that's why I was saying, we need some Bavaria back, and that's a good thing. But would love to, you know, because there's not German classes in our schools, the exchanges were hockey exchanges, where they could at least speak the same language. But, uh, that would be, you know, so I really appreciate both your, your diving into our community and your restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Your English is much better than my German.
Yeah. You should, you should talk to my, uh, kids. They say, daddy, don't speak to English.
My name is Howenstein, but I'm, I'm an American.
With that, I would, uh, accept a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny resolution number 147.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, further discussion will be, I'll be voting against the motion to support the request, so. Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please, for resolution number 147?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
With reluctance, yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
No.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. See you at Almresi. Thank you.
You know, I want to make one final comment for Ben and, and Kevin as they're potentially looking at code changes next year or whatever. I really would like you to speak a little with, um, Chris Everson or ComDev, however, about what is the value of mitigation coming in at 1/30th or 1/60th of a year? You know, I'm just, you know, I, I wanna see what can you really use with that? Or do you lose it to inflation over five years while you're trying to save up enough for one unit? So I wanna take a little bit of a evaluation of what that really means. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
This is a random question. Oh, it's not random.
Random questions, absolutely.
I just, I'm just thinking of, you know, the, the nexus between these requests and affordability. And we all, I mean, the death of the bar menu is, you know, meant awful. And I just don't know what, what, what would be legally permissible, what could be legally entered into if the applicant wanted. But, you know, is there any opportunity for applicants who want some additional square footage advantage like this to have some requirement for a bar menu or some affordability standard or something like that? I have no idea if it is, but I mean, just curious to, to know.
It's worth evaluating if we're looking at the code.
It's worth evaluating if we're looking at the code.
And it could, uh, it could most definitely be something that is agreed to, but maybe not mandated.
I would look at that happily as we come back with code amendments.
That sounds great. Uh, guys, we are moving on to action items. I'm gonna, uh, request just five minutes, um, to stretch legs, get some more water. Uh, and we'll be right back. It is 7:18. We'll be back here by, uh, no later than 7:25. We have two action items left on our agenda. Thank you. Thank you.[211.23]
Welcome back. We just took a five-minute break. We are resuming our November 29, 2022 regular meeting. And we are down on our agenda to action items. The first one is Resolution Number 128. Pete Strecker, come on down. Da-da-da, da-da-da, da-da-da.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Annually, the council is required to adopt a resolution to certify the city's two mill levies. A certification process is required under state statute and must be done by December 15th. The city has two mill levies. One is the general purpose mill levy, which is really one of the only two major sources of discretionary funds that the city council has. Those resources go towards the AMP and the general fund. It supports things like the council, like the numerous economic and HHS grants that the council supports. It supports the lowly finance department, who doesn't really make a lot of money otherwise, the city council, the city attorney, things of that nature. It also affords our capital program in our AMP process. And then the second mill levy that we have is a dedicated stormwater mill levy or Clean River Initiative program. The mill levy maximum that the city can charge is 5.41 mils for the general purpose mill levy. That limit, however, is not obtainable in a number of years due to taper restrictions on revenue growth. So for 2023 collection year, 2022 tax mill levy, the city will need to issue a mill levy credit, a temporary mill levy credit of 1.059 mils, which will bring our mill levy down to 4.351 mils instead of the maximum 5.41. Aside from that, I guess I would pause and request approval of Resolution 128.
Mill levy adoption, everybody? Questions, comments, suggestions?
I think we should adopt it.
I do, too. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 128.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote for Resolution 128, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll bring us down to Resolution Number 140, Series 2022. This is a settlement related to demolition allotment applications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Ben Anderson, sitting next to me is Philip Sapino, both from community development. Resolution 140 was drafted in coordination with the city attorney's office in response to an appeal to administrative decisions that were made by our department in response to the demolition allotment applications. Just a little bit of background, on August 8th, in response to ordinance number 13 that was passed earlier this summer related to the residential development moratorium, Comdev received 13 applications for development or demolition allotments on August 8th. Staff was not anticipating that six of those applications submitted approximately 400-plus applicants, or 400-plus emails in a way that we were not expecting. And after some very detailed analysis of email records, after running the timing of received emails through our common development procedures in the land use code, staff made a determination to deny six of those applications. Initially, five, and then one subsequent application was later denied. And, you know, I think following that kind of administrative determination, the denied applications appealed. The appeal process is specified in growth management was scheduled to go to the planning and zoning commission. But because of the kind of longstanding nature of appeal language, and the growth management section particularly, whatever the outcome that P&amp;Z would have landed on would have continued some uncertainty, not only for the applications that Comdev was ready to issue notices of appeal to, but the six applications that were going to be denied. And because of what was likely going to happen as a consequence of that appeal, you know, creating uncertainty also for future applicants for the development allotments moving forward. And so, working with city attorney's office in, you know, discussions with the appellants, a settlement agreement has been proposed. The outcomes of that settlement agreement are outlined in the memo that was submitted in the packet. But essentially, six applications will be granted 2022 development allotments for these demolition projects. Six of the applications will be granted demolition allotments using 2023 demolition allotments using the multi-year allotment provisions in the code. And then future applicants for future demolition allotments have several paths available to them that I can go into if you have questions, but were outlined in your memo as well. So, for a variety of reasons, most importantly, I think to staff that it brings certainty to this issue, both for staff, but more importantly, for the applicants that are awaiting our decision on this. You know, we think that this is a prudent move in resolving this appeal. So with that, staff recommends passage of Resolution Number 140.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, I don't wish to add a great deal, I just want to note that the council has the inherent authority to resolve appeals and potential disputes that exist amongst parties in it, including the city. And we believe that this is an appropriate use of the authority that the city council has to resolve these items in what is a very contentious and disputed position amongst the various applicants. This is being proposed as a resolution that would adopt settlement agreements that are inhabited, presented to council. I would note also that Exhibit F of the resolutions was initially presented unsigned. It has been signed. So all of the settlement agreements have been signed by the applicants. It's waiting the signature from the city based on the approval granted under Resolution 140. This is not a public hearing, but if council wishes to take any public comment that may be out there, that is certainly up to them or up to you. But we, staff, feels that this is the proper resolution of all of these items at this time. And we encourage you to adopt Resolution 140. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions at this time from council members?
You can take public comment.
You know what? We have two people that have been through this process with us. One is in room with us right now, and so I'd like to honor him and see if he has any comments for us.
I'm only here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Mr. Maple, who is online as well, he has his hand up, however, he made comments earlier this evening. So I don't know if there's a need to hear from him again. Council members?
I guess my question is, are there safeguards in place to make sure a situation doesn't crop up like this again where one planning firm can clog up the whole system for everybody?
Yeah, that's a, I appreciate the question, Councilmember Doyle. And there's a degree to which we, in community development, have to rely on the plain language in the land use code as being the primary guardrails for making sure that anybody who does business with community development does so in a way that's commensurate with our rules and regulations. The extent to which individuals in the future may choose to interpret or apply those guardrails in a different way is something we frankly can't control. That being said, we have and will continue to put a lot of thought into how we might be able to make some of those guardrails even clearer in the context of this particular process. I don't want to guess what the appropriate answer or outcome might be, but that's something that my staff and legals have been spending a lot of time on and will continue to do so.
Thank you. I'm sure people will continue to try and manipulate the system, unfortunately.
Ward. Yeah, I think it's unfortunate that we have this before us. I think that the process was gamed, and I think that we allowed it to be game by not having it well planned out. I think that we need to revisit ordinance 13 of 2022 before we have another allotment process. I'm looking for some other form, a different form of choosing, perhaps a weighted scale for...
Let's, if I could request, let's take that discussion up after this action.
Okay.
And I think it's appropriate, but I think it's appropriate after this action. Is there gonna be any comments at this time? Council members?
I think that this is a reasonable and fair settlement of a sticky situation. I think there, perhaps we were not as prepared for what would happen, and perhaps it was some gaming. But at this point, we are where we are, and I think that this is a reasonable and fair settlement to take it forward. And I do anticipate, as staff has said, that we'll work for measures that are different in the future in order to prevent something like this from happening again, but I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
I have one comment or clarification, that the three-year vested period for both the 2022 and 2023 allotments will commence at the approval of this resolution. Not quite. Ben may clarify a little bit, but they will be together.
We have provisions in the land use code about when the vesting period becomes active. And very soon, following council's action, if you support this resolution, we'll be issuing notices of approval to the 12 projects. They will each be given a three-year vesting period. There's a development order that gets issued, and that gets published in the newspaper, and it's three years from the publishing of that notice of the development order. So, in essence, yes, but there's a little bit of technical difference, so it'll be probably a couple of weeks should this get approved this evening.
All right. Once again, this is not a public hearing. Mr. Maple, I know that you have a hand up. You did make comments earlier. I appreciate your input, as I always do. I look for your input as we move forward on this issue. And we can take your comments by email or any other method. You've met with each of us several times. But again, this is not a public hearing, so I will ask you to just hold your comments and please share them with all of us as we move forward in this process. Thank you. With that, anyone interested in a motion this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 140.
Second.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Can we please have a roll call vote for Resolution Number 140?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
And yes. Okay. Before we leave this issue, I want to come back to Ward's comments. As we move forward with this, we are looking at some refinements to the demolition permit process. Do you have any other further details or comments that you wanted to make at this time?
Yeah, I think the next allotments will be available 2024, so I really want us to spend some time on reevaluating this process and how those allotments are given out and make sure that there's not an opportunity for somebody to game the system. That's about all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Did you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I appreciate that. I think we can definitely do work to improve the technical aspects of how we do this. I mean, in my mind, the system we set up, the result that we got in people's behavior is quite predictable. If you ever bought a concert ticket that was really hard to get, that's what people are going to do. And I kind of think, you know, if on Black Friday Best Buy opens the doors two hours early and people rush in, that's kind of on Best Buy. So I think there's a technological solution to this, and I think we should put it in place.
I want staff to have time to look at all sorts of options, and there's pros and cons to anything. But, you know, I've wondered whether you have a period that's an application period, and depending on how many come in, you put them in a bundle and you pick them out like lottery tickets. And the six who get picked are of equal caliber, but it's not as if somebody got in a few seconds before somebody else got into the barrel, you know? So how do you take the timing element out is part of what I've been thinking about, but I don't have any brilliant answers.
Thanks, Rachel. I agree. I think that there's an opportunity for, you know, the smartest minds in the room to work on this and come back to us with more. You know, I want to say that I think that this is something that the community, majority and at large, supports. I think that the concerns around landfill, around development, redevelopment are real. I think that we did our best effort on this part of some of the land use code changes that we did, and I think that we can refine it. I'm in favor of actually a prioritized system. We've been talking forever about recycling, reuse, adaptability, and the like, and I think that that can show up here in our demolition permit process. And I think that we can come up with a very fair, equitable arrangement for our entire community, and I think that that's what our community wants. So, thank you guys very much. Appreciate you. Fred, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Appreciate you. And your involvement throughout the process, and I can assume going forward as well. So thank you for that. Council, before we move to our next item, you know, there is an issue that I thought we were going to kind of clarify earlier with the consent calendar, but the budgeting and the requests in the consent calendar did not match the direction that I think is needed from us. Last night, we had a conversation about the Newcastle Creek Bridge and the process. The timeline that we had been on was trying to match up with a March vote for the public to weigh in on the change in the language that would be needed to move forward at this time. Last night, there was sentiment at the table that that is a really rushed process, perhaps too rushed for what we want to get accomplished. So I wanted to just make sure that we were clear with direction for our city manager, that the expectation from this table is not to be seeing this as a ballot question in the March ballot. And we can just affirm that by, you know, comments, questions, or comments and thumbs up, or whatever you like.
Yeah, this is, this is a future of Aspen, and I think that we need to fully engage the community, and I think we cannot do that by March. So the additional funding for outreach, I think, is going to be well-used, and so I'm not looking for a March ballot issue.
Thank you, Ward.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's too soon. I think it's, you know, I had a chat with Diane and Sarah about the project today. I will have more, just for me to get caught up on where I think I have a full understanding, and I come in with more information than the broader community. I think for this process to be successful, clear, and lead to a trusted result, we'll need more time. And I hope I'm not reading anything incorrect into some of the comments that Sarah made, but I think I got a greater appreciation for the stress that it would put on staff during the holidays and just in general to get ready as well, and I think we need to be mindful of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're talking about changing the entrance, possibility of changing the entrance to Aspen in a very significant manner. I think taking our time and doing it right is the right way to go about this, and so I will support moving the election to a later date.
Thanks. Rachel, do you care for any comments?
Yeah, it's a little disappointing to me to not be moving this forward now. I don't know that you're going to be informing the community more, or you're going to be organizing the opposition. And I'm just simply looking at it that that bridge is reaching the end of its useful life. It will take a dozen years or so to have the funding and the replacement of that bridge. If that bridge starts to fail before we really have a new bridge designed, you know, there's things like putting in a temporary one-lane bridge so that they can work on a new bridge. I mean, the consequences can get terrible, and it's something that the closer we get to the end of that useful life, I think the choices the community have are going to narrow significantly. And this summer's impacts are still fresh in my mind, and two small things. I was down Valley for Thanksgiving, and coming back up in the late afternoon and seeing the magnitude of commuting traffic and work trucks and things that come throughout our community, it's not going to end, and it's not going to change. And this isn't about allowing more cars into Aspen. This is about choosing the one solution that we have on the table that would allow us to control traffic growth in the future. And I'm very concerned that that solution is going to be tossed aside over time by the pressures for an unrestricted four lane and by our community refusing to make a choice and thinking that we can keep that bridge lasting effectively forever. And that the over 10 million, 15 million, whatever it is we spend annually on reducing congestion in this town is going to be something people say, see, it didn't work. You never did it. It never accomplished it. So let's just go ahead and do the four lane in the parking garage under Wagner Park. And I sincerely think that that is going to be an outcome that if this council and this community doesn't take the decision and the opportunities we have right now very seriously. The other is that I had to drop off a packet at the Red Brick before coming to this meeting, and so it was a little after four in the afternoon. And to just start to see the traffic piling through the residential neighborhood to avoid the Castle Creek Bridge, you know, the ongoing detour that has become acceptable in a certain way is not acceptable to me. Seeing the traffic going by the childcare center, that whole route, it's just very disappointing. And I personally think the community is a little more ready to have this question than perhaps others do, that, you know, I don't know when people will feel the timing is right. I mentioned this last night, but I think that this council should set a date certain for it, so it doesn't become kicked down the road or whatever and not done. And people decide to wait, well, let's wait till 2024 selection, you know? Then we can save the 15,000, you know? I just think there'll be reasons to keep putting it off. The can's been kicked down the road by the prior councils for a very, very long time, and that's what's putting us more in a box. But I will accept the council's direction, but I do have to say, I think it's disappointing. And I think a lot of our community is ready to see us move forward now, and I think it will be the defining issue of the election and where people stand on that, whether there's a ballot question or not. And so I'd rather have people be able to pick their council candidates for where they stand on all the issues rather than where they just stand on the entrance. But that's what's going to define the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. I don't even, at this time, I don't have a clear picture of what we would be asking, and I don't think that we can get that together in two weeks. So, you know, I just want to do this right. I think that this is a community that is ready to come together around this question, and I'm looking for the opportunity to make that happen. I think that we took this on in earnest. We're sincere. This is not going to get kicked down to 2024. I would ask, you know, for Sarah to be putting some thought into that and maybe come back to council or council members individually and start talking about what a good date looks like, when that might be ready to go, and work for a good community turnout for the vote. So I'd love Sarah to start thinking about that, and I definitely don't need an answer tonight.
I'll just say I respect all of you for your thoughts and contributions in this and trying to steer it in the right direction. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Sarah, I hope that's clear direction on that item, then.
Yeah, that's very helpful. We'll follow up with you what we think with that little extra breathing room, what it can do for the outreach efforts by letting those outreach efforts go into the first part of January. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, Jim Truett would like to say something.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff is recommending the council go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 2464024A, purchase, acquisition, lease of real or personal property for B, conferences with an attorney for the local public body for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, and for E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. Specific items of discussion involve the following: ACRA negotiations and 949 Smuggler Road Drive? Smuggler. If council votes to go into executive session, the executive session will be recorded, and the recording will be maintained by the clerk for a period of not less than 90 days.
Did you say dinner?
If we do go into executive session, we'll convene downstairs. Once you come out of executive session, we'll adjourn the meeting downstairs.
Thank you, Jim.
We will not return to this room.
I would make a motion in accordance with the attorney's citation for executive session... Sorry, red light. I would make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with the citations of our city attorney.
I'll second.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote for going into executive session, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes.
There we go. Thank you for us, Rich.
Nevertheless.
John was on.
Ninety days.
Years on, it's totally the same thing. It's one of the few things that is.